To this. Okay, welcome everybody to this Tuesday evening. We'll call the meeting to order and we will entertain motions.
I motion to enter into executive session for the purpose discussion regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of Civil Service Law, and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person and/or corporation.
Second.
Move back Chris, second by power, all in favor? Motion passed unanimously. We will be headed into exact and will be out shortly. We vote to vote. Welcome back, good folks. Thank you for joining us. We are going to continue with our meeting. We do have a proposed modifications to the agenda. And I would try to say it as simply as possible. And that is end the consent agenda. We have an agenda item regarding the tax warrants. It is, I would move that we add a resolution. Read it, that be resolved that Emily Shike be hereby appointed Deputy Tax Collector of the Epi City School District New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. That that we move to Agenda Item twelve point five. And then to modify the agenda by using the certification of the tax warrant to twelve point six. So. Hope that we. We're gonna just take that. So again, the idea would be to remove tax warrant currently on the agenda at seven point three. To move that to Agenda Item twelve point six. To add a resolution to appoint Emily Shike as Deputy Tax Collector.
They are moving that now.
I'm making a motion.
Second that motion.
Questions or discussions? All in favor of that modification to the agenda? That is everybody's question to me. Thank you very much. Any other modifications to the agenda that folks may have? Fantastic. We will keep moving. We move to Agenda Item four point one, which is learning forward ICSD or presentation from some of our Epi High School Social Studies teachers.
Live in this community I serve. So unexpectedly at a gathering fall, I heard glowing comments from students about work of these two educators in the field. And so it's with great pleasure. Get to highlight and thank personally for all of your work on the students of this and school district and this school. So Jill and Paul are here to share their experience with anti marginalization curriculum writing. That's part of ICSD running forward. Thank you so much for coming. We'll try and get you back home soon so you can be ready for students and to model. Thank you.
We're teachers. This is actually weird for us to sit and talk. We actually wanted to begin by thanking members of the Board of Education and other district leaders for allowing us the time to be here. You know, Mary Grover, this goes without saying, you've been order of ours and we just are really, really, really grateful to your personal professional kind of. As Mary said, and we're going to talk really about two main things. The first is a specific project that we developed a couple of years ago. Through professional development offered by the district, summer workshops in collaboration with the Equity Consulting Group. We're also going to talk more generally about ways that we've worked and implement allyship, anti racist, anti marginalization curriculum throughout our teaching of American history all year long. I'm not sure who's changing. So my name is Paul. I've been at Epi High School for eleven years now. And what we have here is an image we found that represents the idea of allyship being adjourned. If I'm here ten years from now, twenty years from now. Every day I'm going to continue to be doing what I'm trying to do right now, which is to be better each day than I was the day before, each year better than here I was before that. Teaching American history is urgent work. It is something that we take very, very seriously. We look around everywhere and we see American history. We believe that it is a tool for empowerment, for enrichment, is a tool to make this country literally a better place, a more equitable, just place for all people. And as such, we're trying to improve ourselves as we try to improve our craft. We believe those two things are inseparable. To improve oneself is to improve one's teaching and vice versa.
Hi, I'm Jeff House. I've been at Epi High School for eight years and this year I'm teaching all sections of US history, which I love. And I've also taught economics and government. And I'm going to start talking about the project that we worked on that apparently was what some of the students were writing about. So thank you. So it's a little hidden up there, but it's indigenous peoples in this land. That was the title of the project. And I think we have to make you sorry, active part by active part. But ultimately, again, as Paul mentioned, we started this project work through professional development over the summer. And this would have been not the summer, the summer before. And it was anti marginalization curriculum writing one point O. So that was our first experience with it. And we're already trying to do this work, but it was really nice to have that opportunity to sit over the summer and to have the Equity Consulting Group and other people helping us like get better at our craft. So one of the things that they were bringing to the table that's really important with this curriculum writing is having a really good focus question. A really good focus question can really be quite broad in some senses. So that you're exploring a lot of areas that help answer that question. So the central question that we came up with related to this work that we wanted to do is who comes as we, the people in this space that we call the United States? And that question kind of like in part stemmed from a TED Talk that we watched, but we, the people, I think most of you know, it's probably, you probably not, but anyways, it's the beginning of the preamble of the Constitution. And we're introducing our structure of government with that language. But we all know that certainly not everyone has been fully included in that statement in this history and still isn't. So we are kind of bringing our students on that journey with us so we can think about that history. And then being teachers and wanting to focus and honor the land that we're on and the people that stored it that way for thousands of years. We wanted to focus and begin our year with the indigenous people that stored this land, who are the Gaiakonan people, and then the larger Haudenosaunee Confederacy. So we decided to have a kind of more central question here. How can we honor and respect those people, the Gaiakonan people, who took such good care of this land for so long? Like when you think about it, literally where we're sitting is on land that other people lived on for thousands of years cared for, had genius joy, also suffering during that time. And then more centrally, like where we wanted to go with this is relating to the allyship. But if you want to put up the two questions there, these were the tasks that we're hoping to get our students to perform through the unit and by the end of the project. And we wanted them to kind of come to an idea of what it means to be an ally to indigenous groups. And how do you honor and respect them and their lands? And we wanted them to take some sort of action as is part of being an ally is to actually take action at hand.
So Jill spoke about kind of the nature, the objective of the project itself. In order to allow, help students build up to that, we were strategic in the ways that we presented and kind of carried out lessons and themes. We put some here. It would, I think, be very time consuming to go through and explain each and every one. By all means, you know, at the end, if people have questions about specifics, we're happy to talk about them. I'm going to sort of speak generally. In the first thing I want to add is that, you know, Jill mentioned this, this is how we began the year. And we began the year, I'm talking literally seventh day of school, maybe the third. We did that really intentionally. We intend to center US history on the land and the space that we are on right now. And as such, it makes sense to begin with that, to begin with the recognition of this space, the people whose land we are on. And as Jill said, the continued and the historic stewardship of this. One of the more, most important themes was one of the, I think the fourth, fifth bullet pointed out, the inseparability of land sovereignty and culture. And that relates to the Haudenosaunee people and even more specifically the Gaiakonan people. So over to the right, we have this really beautiful image. And we spoke about this, Jill and I, we can resist the urge to just ask if anybody actually knows what that is. For teachers, it's like asking questions. Let me know what that is depicting in that image. So I'm not going to tell too much the story because I'd rather people were able to read about it and actually sort of embrace and experience the story themselves. But what I can say generally is this is the crowning of Taradaho, the chief of chiefs by the clan mothers of the Haudenosaunee people. This is the story of where the Haudenosaunee themselves, they selves come from. Their story. How they formed, who they are, the land, the language, all of that is inseparable. And these are things that we try to embrace and engage with our students. Really sort of challenging the way that we think about history and a Western centric sort of style of learning. Really challenged the way that we see space, the way that we see culture, the way that we see language. And that is sort of the central theme for a lot of this. And to do that, we explored a lot of different really important aspects of Gaiakonan culture, including again, the story of Hiawatha, of Wampanoam. Of the varied ways in which indigenous people on this land itself have and are stewarding through all sorts of incredible genius that influences so much of what we know. To direct, to create this instruction, we use a lot of different types of learning. Some of that was just discussions, some was direct instruction, some was reading. We used selections of, for example, like Braids of Sweetgrass, other just beautiful texts to have conversations in US history about reciprocity and love and how these tie to what it means to be here. We showed a twenty twenty-two, I believe it was twenty twenty-two film called Inhabitants. It took, I think, three days. And each day we had conversations with students. And this all built up to this project. The goal was that by the time we actually asked students to engage on this action stack, they have necessary tools to think critically.
So these are some of the results. And when I mentioned that we started this the summer before this summer, we actually did anti marginalization curriculum writing two point O in a tune-up on this project this summer. Because like all teachers, right, we want to keep improving the work that we've done and we're able to reflect on what happened all before and improve it and also just update based on like, you know, what's happening in the world at the time. So last year, one of the things, not this fall, but the fall before, that a lot of students focused on was like doing the land acknowledgement at the, within the district or at the high school. And some of them actually took that for themselves and got a land acknowledgement on our high school announcements. And then there were some requests, and I think some of them even wrote letters to Dr. Brown to the board, like, you know, possibly report these meetings doing land acknowledgement. And you know, we see that a lot at the bottom of sometimes, like some websites or Cornell does a lot with that. And we know that's just a step, right? It's an acknowledgement. But for some people, they don't know whose land they're on. And like those little things do start people pursuing more knowledge information. So those were some of the things that, you know, were highlighted more last year. And some of them were looking into like the Dakota Access Pipeline, things like that. And then this year, I'm a lot of them focused with that land includes sovereignty, kind of thinking about how we could recognize that in our area or New York State or at the national level, depending on its student voice of choice, what ideas they break. So some wanted to educate their peers, which is what most of these pictures are. Even if they're awesome at crocheting and their way of educating their peers is working in a group where some bring the information and some bring the visual tangible items. And then for some of them, they thought and wrote again to school policymakers about bringing a heritage garden, which would be like honoring some of the crop production or other things that the Gaiakonan people or the Haudenosaunee people traditionally grew to bring that knowledge or murals, things like that. And actually, the art department at our high school is working on, and they were thinking of a watershed mural. But right now they're going to try to work with some of our students to brainstorm ideas in which they can kind of combine the Haida watershed, which has again been stored by the Gaiakonan people for a long time, and bring in indigenous perspectives to help make a better or honoring type mural.
And, you know, sort of disconnect this to a larger theme. You know, we wanted to speak really generally and briefly, because for time, I understand, about just ways that we really kind of worked and are working in order to build these themes throughout the year. And, you know, this goes without saying, but, you know, we sit here now making no pretense of being experts of this sort of whatever, but rather build a humility about what it means to be an ally and a teacher, working constantly, again, at both improving ourselves and therefore our craft. And this is an ongoing effort. We're really, really clear about that. And through that, a big part of that is, you know, and I actually italicized, there's just working on re-centering the narrative. And a lot of that comes back to the idea of humility. You know, the history that I learned is not the history that I want to teach. It's not, it's not the history that I want my students to see and hear and to experience. We want our students, every one of them, to see themselves, to hear themselves, to read texts that speak to their varied identities and to feel empowered from that. We think that US history is, can be so enriching and so empowering and so emotional. And so, you know, a big part of that is teaching the varied histories in which there have been oppressions, but also the, so many ways in which there's been a genius and achievement and joy. We want all of our students to actually leave our class with smiles and being like, man, like that's incredible, the thing I just learned. I feel so good about that. To actually feel like they are in this curriculum every single day, or at least almost every single day. A lot of that comes down to source and material selection. Everything we use, we choose carefully. Every single thing we use. We are careful about who wrote, who produced, who directed, who starred in, every single thing is carefully chosen. We also believe that we can and we should not go it alone. So, you know, over the summer, I reached out to this incredible historian, Margaret Washington, she's a former professor of history at Cornell. She's still an historian, of course, even in retirement. And she spoke to our students, Phyllis Wheatley, great poet, who is absent from almost every history book I have ever came across. And yet is an absolutely astonishing person to learn more about. If you don't know about Phyllis Wheatley, I urge you to, to learn more about her because she is absolutely astonishing. And she spoke to our students. They got to hear from a internationally acclaimed historian about this really powerful poet. We've reached out to guest speakers and we've had guest speakers who are, they themselves, Haudenosaunee, come and speak to our students. We are also constantly in the process of working on building these connections. Sometimes the logistics of this means that they don't always pan out. But they have at times panned out. And once again, we thank Mary Grover for often like providing district funding to pay individuals who want to speak. And everybody, of course. And therefore to give our students again a more rich experience.
I'll give you a moment to read that quote. There's so many good quotes out there in a lot of ways. This one just kind of spoke to like what we're talking about here. There's so much history that was hidden for so long that's being uncovered. And we're fortunate to be in a time where we're able to be able to like get all of these new resources and get more and more films that were made, for example, by indigenous individuals. And these things basically didn't exist for a long period of time because we were doing a white Eurocentric view of American history. Like it was the way that was told. And it's just so important to be doing this work, to be taking these seeds that were dormant for so long and to be bringing them forth so that they can grow and flourish. And this world is really on strike. There are so many things every day that, you know, are hard to hear that are happening or that people are personally experiencing that are happening for them. And so for people to be able to see in history, these people who have these joy, genius creativity and persevere, that's really important. It needs to speak to different people's identities because all of our identities are different and it's not just one person's story that is history. So that's, you know, it's a long road and we really appreciate that in this district, we feel a hundred percent free to teach the true history and to continue to pursue finding more about it.
Very much for that presentation. You to my four colleagues for questions or comments?
You know, it's thrilling and frustrating at the time because knowing that my history education was totally excluding anything close to that. And it wasn't until I was an older adult before I started learning real history. And you start doing the world differently. And I was scrolling through my text messages because I texted my son, he knew Paul, he said, one of the best teachers he ever had. I was trying to find the text chat thread, but it's a little bit farther back, but I wanted to make sure I put that out there. But, you know, when we look at present time and history is being rewritten, excluded, hidden, destroyed. This is so important. You know, and I had a question. When we bring native speakers in, is there any direction given from them on what we could do better or how we could do differently? Because I, you know, when we are telling history and we're telling somebody else's history, it may not be the way it's still told through us as best we can, but I'm wondering what their voices say. Hopefully I said well.
Yeah, I only know like from some of what we hear is just our nation really has never reconciled like what happened to indigenous individuals. Like it hasn't, there's never been some commission put together and to figure it out. And so like when we're talking to individuals from this, it's acknowledging that they, most of them do need some of the more of their land back, things like that, and that they, they need allies in this. I know that's some of what we hear. Paul might have some more things.
Yeah, no, you're definitely right. I'm not sure this is like a direct answer to your question. I remember Aaron very well. Although it wasn't a long time now. But not the speakers directly that I can think of. For example, Alan Jameson. He is such an incredibly fine man, is such a beautiful speaker. He'll be coming in, I think, April and then we'll work on him again this year. We have incorporated resources based on what we've heard recommendations from, from our students. So for example, every student that takes US history, you can have a copy of, at least in our classes, and have a copy of an indigenous people's history of the United States for young people. We actually came across that both as, from a recommendation from a indigenous person that we reached out to. We've incorporated like other examples of like native humor and stuff into our curriculum based on recommendation from individuals we've reached out to. So not that I can think of directly from the speakers, but we have implemented changes based on conversation we got had with individuals.
I'd just like to remark that your love of history brought tears to my eyes. And I all knows, I mean that sincerely, many years studying history, unfortunately. I think you were a student teacher when teacher was at Epi High School. He tutored her. Which, when she had to travel for robotics, that is how talented this young man is. I can still call you a young man, you're getting older at the same rate. I don't want to, I don't want to take too much time, but I was doing some tidying up a few months ago and I ran across an old yellow newspapers article from the Preston Sun Bulletin down in Binghamton from like nineteen eighty-six or eighty-seven. And my now husband, who was Paul's mentor in social studies teaching, was an intern at the Robinson Center in Binghamton. And he was, he had been asked by the director to do something about the history of all the East European people who lived in the Binghamton area. And nothing had ever been done about them. And he was quoted in the article as saying, I looked at all of my history books and everything I was taught by my teachers, and I never heard anyone with a name like mine. And his name is Senator Vasilius. Never. And, and not only that, he said, you know, I never had a teacher whose name was like mine until he got to college and had auto. And that made him feel really forgotten. He's white, but there are many, there are many white backgrounds. And it was a very, it was a very, we'll all remember, not just a white culture, a very Anglo culture, an Anglo district. And in all of the talks we've had about curriculum, we've heard from different groups of students, different ethnicities and, and gender identities. And all the remarks I, I've heard here and on virtual thing are, are we want to be included. We want to be normal. We want to be seen as normal. And that is the ultimate goal of these curricular changes that, that in this district, teachers do have the freedom to develop. And that doesn't happen. Well, I'm not just talking Florida. That is happening in New York State. So thank you for being bold, intelligent teachers who take that opportunity and make the most of it.
I just piggyback on that. Listening to you makes me nostalgic, I guess, for my days of teaching at Epi High School. And I taught for many years, I taught eleventh grade English, and there was a focus on American literature in that year. And a lot of the reason was because our eleventh graders were taking American history. But as much as we wanted to, we didn't really collaborate across disciplines. And so I think about, you know, if I were doing it now, how much I would love to be able to collaborate with you guys. I did teach Phyllis Wheatley. You would find her in literature anthologies. It was a bit of token, I have to say, but but anyway, it's just, and now in this district, we would be supportive in, supportive in collaborating across disciplines. We'd have time in the summer, you know, where we'd be able to develop products, projects that could be pursued both in the English classroom, the social studies classroom. So, you know, I missed that idea and I'm nostalgic for that kind of opportunity. I just want to ask this question. I'm just curious to know what kind of questions do students ask or have students ask that have challenged or deepened your thinking about, you know, what you're teaching and how you're teaching it?
Well, and part of it is sometimes they'll, they'll ask for, say things that do make me change traction or other things. And I know the same is true for Paul, but. And I know the same is true for Paul, but I know a couple of years ago during the pandemic, one that hits about me. You know, we were doing all these changes during that time because we had to, but also it was a good chance to rethink curriculum. And some of them, some of my students, I can't speak to Paul's because he's partly mentoring me, I feel like sometimes in this journey too. But ultimately, they did want to see more joy in history because it's so important to understand the things that happened that connect today and the fact like why we, the people doesn't actually fully include everyone in some people's views. But that is maybe always thinking about how to get more of that in and remember in a one-year course, literally just something else. But that, that one really, it's just always there. I can literally think of it, you know, and reading it and being like, you're absolutely right. Like I can do this.
Yeah, I'm going to mostly agree with Jill. I think that, you know, our students, this is something that is just so inspiring about. I only ever taught at Ithaca City School District, so I might only be here, it might be everywhere. But our students are really, really, really passionate about making this world better, right? And they recognize that a lot of that is done in history classes and they're willing, and this is so incredible to say, hey, how did you know this? Or can we actually learn more about this? And I'm going to confess, I can't think of specific examples right now. Kind of nervous. I can assure you, similar to Jill, we have at times, many times, added lessons, added theme, added things because students have asked about that. And I've been like, hey, like, you know, we didn't learn a lot about this or we talked about this and yeah, it might be a couple of days, give us time to organize and make it happen. Well, heck yeah, you know, we adapt based on what our students want and need.
We have time for one or two more. A couple of thoughts. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Jill. Boring to be nervous in front of us. I know all are applauding what you guys are doing. My first question is about grace. Not all students are sitting there confused about the settling belonging to the street, they understand violence impacting their whole families. So I'm curious how you manage the energy. These topics. That's the first question. And the second question, when you talk about joy, were you able to share the real things happening with indigenous thoughts around the country? That are moving in the right direction, the Buffalo Cooperative, Thousand Lakes Rice Movement. So, so just those are some questions.
I'll take the first, I'll take the second.
That's why I'll give those last. Very much yes, the second one. And for those that haven't seen it, we actually really recommend the film Inhabitants. And this is just one example that I'll catch all. And it does actually exactly what I'll do about. And it, it shows the students presence of indigenous genius and indigenous joy, not just the historical, historical joy. And again, our students love it as do we. It is a better understanding of our history and of our space here. The first question, I would like more time to think about. So I'm going to go over to my colleague.
Um, so one of the things that I'm doing right now in my Thursday after school is another professional development related to identity work. And your question has made me think of one of the reasons I, again, I'm keeping, taking this journey and some of the readings that we're doing in that one and just some discussions we're having, like I've shared out loud that, that that's one of the things that I think about a lot, how I'm affecting the students in the room with the tough and hard histories sometimes that we're having. And since we're speaking to again, multiple identities and, and again, we haven't gotten to all, all of the things that we're going to do with different groups, but depending on the topic we're talking about, there are going to be students in the room that again, can relate directly to like that topic in a way that can be tougher or lived it if we're speaking about something hard. And so it's always on my mind and my best answer to that is I do my best to kind of look and speak to people from those groups and find out what is the best way to approach this. And I know one of it is not to single out and act like I know who's from what group or who identifies as what. So I speak to it as a whole. If we know there's something tough in a film or reading or other things, we always talk about giving warnings ahead and let them know like this topic will be here if you need like a space that you'll be more comfortable in, like that's something they can let us know ahead. Again, individually, we're talking to the whole room for anyone who knows it may be something that is difficult. But then it's also complete room for discussion and sharing. We try to ask intelligent, thoughtful, open questions where if somebody does want to share some of their identity, their history, their experiences, they can't. But again, that's that individual student's choice.
Yeah, that's beautiful. And I think a lot of it too simply just comes down to something which we are also working on constantly, which is just working to create an environment in the room where students do feel safe with us, safe with each other and safe with us. We've at times, I think we call them check your pulse responses, like where students can privately write their pulse about something we talked, we talked about that day, like literally just how are you doing? Are you doing okay with this? Like, what are you feeling? And then responding to that in ways that like meet their needs or meet the needs of more students at once, whatever it might be. So I, I feel that a lot of it for us has just come down to learning where students are in just as a human sense, learning what their needs are, learning how we can support them and be there for them. And then it seems to get easier as the year goes on, but it never lets up all year.
Great. Well, Jill and Paul, I want to thank you tremendously for not just the work you're doing, but also being here this evening. For me, it's somewhat ironic that I teach a history course on education and the reading we start with tomorrow is called We the People About the Guyanese and what their education looked like prior to other people's arrival, right? So I think there's a real synergy there. And as an educator and as a student, I'm so appreciative to hear the comments about humor and joy. Far too often, I think we focus on the struggle, which is real and necessary, but never balanced. And I know I was always taught what was done unto me, not what I was able to do for myself. So hearing what you are doing is liberating and I just want to thank you for your time with us this evening. And I know Dr. Brown, you.
I'd hate to follow you. But just to underscore something about that, we have student advisory council that I have weekly monthly and your names have come up often. They chose this year to focus on indigenous studies and it was because just breaking from your class. And they've given out that we've had a guest speaker in as well, how it came in and spoke to what we can do differently and more as a community. But also want to highlight that we think about recruitment and teach recruitment and retention of talented educators. I hope you don't mind. These are two educators who chose to be here. They sought us out and chose to be here and Mary can probably confirm this. Every professional development opportunity we've offered around this odd work, they've been the first ones to sign up. Without asking questions about compensation, they want to be in this place. So when we think about recruitment and retention of powerful educators, we have two great examples here who've taken advantage of all that this community has had to offer and you see the problems. My phone is blowing up because I've had friends from other states who don't allow this conversation to happen, watched a board meeting and they're in awe. So you may need to give us some inquiries, folks, if you see someone on the floor. They're watching and just thank you for what you do every day. All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
One of the things that we're going to be focused on is the changing of our agenda precisely to have experiences like that. And also to make sure that we have young people and educators that we get them to go first so we can get them home to be ready for the next day. And that is an intentional transition and sorry towards the press, right? But that is an intentional decision that we've done in recognition of hearing from our educators and hearing from students about that. So that's, that's that change. So we will continue on with our agenda, which now includes public comments. And I believe we have a couple of names who have signed up.
For me, good evening, everybody. My name is Vanessa Fagin Turner. I'm an Ithican and proud graduate of BJM, Do-It and IHS. And just one of many girls that this board backed 25 years ago in 1998, when it granted our proposal to start IHS's first girls varsity ice hockey team. And I want to acknowledge that there are players from that inaugural team in the room with you tonight, including my sister Allison and my long suffering hockey mom, Jane, as well as I believe my co-captain is also speaking this evening, Aubrey, with whom I think many of you are familiar. The Ithaca School Board's leadership in establishing this team not only made history here in Ithaca, it made history for all of New York State, launching the first varsity girls hockey high school league in all, in the whole state and one of the first in the country and planted the seeds for what is now one of the very fastest growing girls sports in the country. I'm privileged, a word I don't use lightly, to address you all tonight as a representative for the many others who played on this team and to express our support for the program's continuation. We urge you to publicly commit to reinstating the girls varsity ice hockey team at the high school next year as soon as possible so that necessary planning can begin. We're also here as a show of solidarity and support for the current team and there would be roster of girls, especially it's seniors who find themselves in the position we did 26 years ago without a place alongside their male identifying peers. I graduated before I was able to join the varsity team we started. I played on the club team we began as a senior, but never got to say I was a varsity team player and missed out on our chance to play and represent at the state championships, which the team went on to win. Girls' ice hockey, like most other sports, has private club options for many players outside of varsity athletics at the high school. So it is important to explain why having a high school team is critically important, particularly for hockey. First, gender equity. Title IX turned 50 last year and Ithaca literally led the state in enacting its historic principles without so much as a single petition from us. It gave and it stood readily in support of us. But diversity inclusion didn't necessarily follow. Title IX and our commitment in starting a team left a lot of work to do. It didn't solve access and inclusion challenges that too many girls still face when it comes to playing hockey. Hockey is an expensive sport. If you've watched it, you see that there's a lot of equipment, including crazy things like garter belts. What sport still has garter belts and socks? And it has expensive ice time at crazy hours of the day, often four and four thirty AM and long travel distances between games because of the need for ice rinks, which means it's a huge commitment from not only girls and their players, but also family, friends and other allies who need to commit to standing by these players as well. A high school team provides the equipment, the ice time at a much more reasonable hour, I might add, and it provides school buses and transportation. This doesn't solve the problem either. Most people don't wake up at their first day of ninth grade and decide to play ice hockey. But I believe that starting to address and fix the access question is about adding more opportunities and not taking them away. I would love to see the idea of starting a modified team for the middle schools so that students can begin playing girls and across the board at an earlier stage, boys too, so that they can get out of the expensive club system earlier, seed that pipeline. I recognize that there are logistical challenges across the board, some seeded during COVID, some from other types of schedule and other challenges, but my understanding is that none are insurmountable and that it is feasible to reinstate this team now. Our campaign for a team in ninety-eight was called Great, which stood for Girls Really Expect a Team. Girls are so often taught to be ashamed of saying what they want, let alone expecting that they'll get it. In the spirit of teaching girls not only to skate, but to expect the same opportunities as their male peers, I hope you'll reinstate the team next year without delay. We want it and we want girls now to know that they can expect it. I've brought this cup with me, which has come with me everywhere I've ever lived in Ithaca and beyond. It has the names of every player and the date of our first IHS girls hockey team, nineteen ninety-eight, if you can see that there, on November twelfth, was that or sixteenth? I'm reading it backwards. And it is a reminder of how proud we felt and what a special opportunity it was. I know you have incredibly important and many other things on your plate, but I hope that you will consider this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And next we have Auburn Siddle.
Hello, everybody. I hope you can hear me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much and thanks, Nessa. Thank you all for all the work you do to support our kids here in ICSD. I am also here to talk about girls varsity hockey team. As Nessa mentioned, I was one of the many young women who helped to found that team in nineteen ninety-eight. I'm also a parent of two elementary school students who attend school here at BJM in our district and a rising pre-career who cannot wait to join her, his brother and sister. Many of you may not know that I'm also an education researcher and I actually studied the impact of social emotional learning curricula on adolescent girls agency and empowerment outcomes. So the question of women and girls in sports is one that is not only close to my heart personally, but also professionally. I won't mention that, you know, we were told in nineteen ninety-eight by many, many people and several of them who worked for the district in no uncertain terms that girls just shouldn't play hockey, period. And I am so grateful that we no longer live in that time and that you all as a board have an expressed commitment to equity. I mean, the presentations of teachers from IHS earlier tonight were really just so full of joy and inspiring. So as much as I am grateful that we no longer live in that moment in time, we also all know that sexism, racism and classism and the intersection of the experiences of all three are alive and well in our district and our world. And that hockey, as Nessa mentioned, is a sport that has historically been male dominated, white and financially privileged, which really does just underscore the importance of providing this opportunity for girls to play in high school as a real equity issue. I'm a person that didn't come from a hockey family. I was really fortunate to kind of accidentally stumble into the sport through a friend of mine in elementary school. And what I found was that it provided an incredibly important source of self-confidence for me as an adolescent girl who was trying to understand the implications of my gender identity in the world. And I will say that my family struggled to pay for hockey as working parents. They also really struggled to transport me to games and tournaments, which were quite far. That's partially the nature of the sport, but that's also partially because girls teams were and are fewer and far between. So the promise of playing for, with free ice time, transportation and travel costs is really a game changer in terms of accessibility and reducing the barriers to entry of the sport. I would love to get more of my kiddos peers involved. And I'll share, I think you've heard from my better half and partner in the last couple of weeks in a committee meeting about the gender equity issues that one of our children has faced in our schools. We know that gender inequity is alive and well. And you know, unfortunately, one of my children has experienced some serious instances of sexual harassment. Just about every year, she's attended an ICSD school. And so I was really glad to see the board taking that issue seriously. I saw the policy committee meeting proposed updates to the Title IX policy, and I think that's a great step forward. And while these may seem unrelated issues, girls varsity hockey, gender equity and Title IX policies regarding sexual harassment in schools, to me, reinstating the girls varsity team is actually an important part of strengthening not just Title IX, but really fostering a more inclusive culture and sending a message that this is a community which but really fostering a more inclusive culture and sending a message that this is a community which honors, uplifts, and prioritizes our young women and girl identifying children. Our kiddo started playing hockey last year, and it's been an incredibly important source of power and confidence for her, just as it was for me. She looks up to the big girls who help her on and off the ice. Her relationships with those girls, I know, will continue to sustain her. So women's sports are an important part of how we support the empowerment of our young women and honor their identities, their strength, and their rights. And hockey poses a really unique opportunity for girls to express themselves in a context where they have not been historically welcomed. And you all may not be aware that we are really fortunate here in Ithaca to have one of the oldest traditions of girls and women's hockey in the country. TGHA just celebrated its 50th anniversary. As an adult, I still highly value the opportunity to play this sport exclusively with women, and I have lived in many places in the country and the world. And I can tell you, Ithaca is the only place where I have been able to do that. So we should really honor the legacy and work hard to protect it. So just thank you all for your time. I hope you'll consider, you know, taking this issue seriously. I know that there are many competing priorities. I would also echo what Nessa has shared about the importance of making accessibility available sooner and earlier in students' careers with potentially the addition of a modified, modified team and beyond. Thanks for your time tonight.
And next we have John Goodrow.
Hello, this is John Goodrow. Can you hear me there in the room?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just want to say, you know, I was listening to the previous speakers and agree with all of what they said, and I think this is a very important program for young girls. And certainly, I support reinstating the program for next year. I was gonna bring up some of the points that they already did, but I want to also bring up a few more. So, you know, first, let me introduce myself a little bit more. I've been playing hockey for 52 years. I've been directly involved in hockey in Ithaca for about 25 years as a director in the youth organizations, as a player, and as a coach. I've coached girls, boys, combined youth teams for about 15 years in Ithaca, including the girls' high school hockey team. So I know the landscape very well. I still know many of the families that are involved. And so it was very disappointing this year to hear that there would not be a girls' hockey team at the high school. I can only imagine how that felt for the girls on the team, especially for the seniors on the team who might not get another chance to play hockey. I think it was also ironic that the same year that TGHA celebrated its 50th anniversary, that there was not a hockey team at the high school. And I think you just heard from the last speaker, the legacy of TGHA. It's the oldest girls' hockey community in the state and among the oldest in the country. And the proud legacy of that organization may be in danger if hockey fails to thrive at the high school. So that's also an important feeder program into the high school program. So, you know, as, as the other speaker said, I think it's important to get girls involved at that young age and, and the TGHA program gives that opportunity. I remember my daughter's first year playing on the high school team. She was very excited about it. My wife, our friends are all very happy as well. We became volunteers to support it. Unfortunately, it quickly became clear to us that there's multiple competing visions of girls' hockey, and those forces don't exist well together. So I just wanted to take this time and maybe talk about that a little bit. Because in that year, those competing forces created an environment that caused the girls' team to have to forfeit their sectional championship because they didn't have enough players to field the team, despite having more than enough on the roster. And the season ended on that note. So it took me a while to understand how these forces came to be and how to navigate them. But I see now that those forces had a role in leading to the situation that we saw this year. So hockey is a unique and a complex sport. It's unlike any other in how it's organized and scheduled and executed. I think one of the biggest issues is access to ice. And we've already heard about some of the crazy times or the long distances that, that people have to travel to, to play. So that's certainly a barrier. And if the girls' hockey team program is going to succeed, succeed at Ithaca, I think we should have some conversation about what the vision is for that future so we can avoid some of these, you know, conflicts in terms of vision. You know, there's, there's not an executive decision or a one-size-fits-all strategy that'll fix that. But the, the key issues, there's three of them, I think. First, the length of the season, meaning hockey is a long season. It's, it's about six months long, even though the high school season is about half of that. There's competition between club and athletic teams. We, we've already heard a little bit about that from the other speakers, meaning that club and academic teams always play their seasons at the same time. So, you know, girls that really want to commit to hockey as a sport are forced to choose between them. And that, I think, is what led to some of the issues we saw this year. And finally, the, the whole concept of mergers. I don't want to get too far off in the weeds about what that's all about, but the point I wanted to make there is that nearly all of the girls' teams in New York State are merged teams. So, you know, it's something that is kind of part of the, the real estate here. So that's the main points I wanted to make. You know, we can't fix this year, but, but hopefully we can improve in the future. And, you know, hopefully the points that we hear tonight can be part of that dialogue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
All the folks who are on our list board responses.
I don't think this is super important. I think there's still a lot of issues just about the country and even here about just the gender inequality in sports. I understand there's, that's not like the whole point. Maybe it's like why it was getting cut, which sounds like it's, is that the girls' hockey is getting, varsity is getting cut, that's the narrative. And I just think that there is not, that's important that even if it's a smaller scheme, that it should still happen because there is still girls in Ithaca that want to play hockey and the ones that can't afford to go to the club route. So, I mean, yeah, I just think it's really important to keep it because for gender equality and for people financially that can't afford to play hockey, I think that'd just be a big loss in our community.
The language that the team just cut usually refers to that there is not a financial investment in the school district to make that happen. And that is not the situation that we find ourselves in now. I think as our last speaker said, there are a number of competing factors and priorities that has created a situation that I think all board members want to find a solution to make sure the team can continue from years prior, so, or years moving forward. So if I heard John correctly, that there's a, we need to have a conversation about the vision. And I think I can speak on behalf of our board members, saying that we are committed to that conversation. We're committed to providing as many opportunities as possible and more importantly, look forward to finding a solution. I think as our first speaker said, that nothing is insurmountable. It may take us a while to be innovative, but we're committed to making that happen. We're committed to the team as well. That's what I think I, I would say. Any other board responses?
I, I, I think I just want to add, and I hope all makes sense. I mean, I think we all recognize how important sports are, particularly for females. I mean, it shapes your life. It can give you confidence. It can give you something else to do. And, you know, a lot of times, we are left out of it. So this is not something we would let slide. It's going to be a conversation. But I guess, I just, I guess I want to reinforce how important athletics are for female athletes. And, and not just varsity players, but modified JV, all of it. It's all important. And we are aware of that. As a JV player, I agree.
Yeah, just throw them in. You need ice time. Put them with the guys. They can share it.
We'll be trying to find students. I think the board recognizes how important it is.
I would say, you know, we appreciate hearing about this because, quite frankly, this is about this situation. So we need, you know, time to launch the conversations and to look at the challenges, the obstacles, and
I have been blessed to hear from one of the original members of the team who has let me know, known certain tracks. And I'm quite certain they'll let me know if we continue as well. We will continue on to our agenda. Thank you, everyone, for speaking and letting us know. Up next is our student reps. And how about we begin with Ithaca High School?
Thank you for two hour delay.
Hope your parents said that.
The two hour delay this evening?
Nice for me.
So for the district, we also, thank you. Sunday marks the start of the Lunar New Year. It's celebrated by many cultures and many different ways. This is our last meeting for Black History Month begins about the February 30th. It's a time to honor the contributions of a lot of these African-Americans, of U.S. history and society, as well as the new voices fighting for justice and equality. It's a time to listen and uplift and celebrate culture and history that has a meaningful part for American society and its creation, but has never been acknowledged as such. Friday is International Holocaust Memorial Day. January 27th in 1954, the Soviet Army liberated the prisoners of Auschwitz concentration camp. This day is, is important because it is there to prevent future accidents. They examine for high adjusted income status. Students will have school unless they're taking physical exams. Because of this reason, McCandless and Grace are unable to join us. Ithaca High School's code grad robotics team is working long hours to build their robot. They may even be there now. I would like to extend gratitude to the students who reported two trash can fires in separate backfire. The fires were also put out. Everything was handled swiftly. Students greatly appreciate the direct and transparent communication from our administration, which clearly explained the situation and how it was resolved. One concern of the student body seems to be that the fire alarm didn't go off and some kids could even smell smoke. Luckily, no one was hurt and it was all resolved. Last week, the drivers had cars involved in a crash. No one was hurt. But this does pose the question of next semester's drivers. There's a simulation for driving the school has. But given the fact that the car is in 2021, I believe, and has sustained damage, there's questions about whether or not it's fixed. Or we go old school and use the superintendent's old car. That is historically being one where the driver's head car has gone.
Yesterday, we met with Mr. Trumbull and discussed the distribution of funding for extracurricular activities. So oftentimes, it's hard for student-led clubs, especially those that are competitive to raise enough money for that. Clubs such as TSA, South Olympia, the Brain Team, all compete at state and national levels and have large expenses associated with the cost per competition. This leads to individuals paying out of their own pocket and makes the club less equitable for the entire student body. Additionally, clubs that don't necessarily attend competitions and still be able to organize events that trust about the burden. On the other hand, athletes rarely have to worry about having and we learn that the athletics department gets funding from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, since our school is a member of it, plus there's an additional budget for athletics. However, there is no funding openly available for clubs other than small cycles for advisors. And as Mr. Trumbull described, we have a low, like a zero level budget. So we are wondering if it is possible for a portion to be taken out of the general budget to support. And we are also still waiting on an update on the situation regarding the school bus and why the situation was reported to law enforcement, student parent. Specifically, we asked for the specific patches that the board will take in the future to make sure this doesn't happen again, whether that means suffering for training bus drivers or a better We would also like to see the session called, When Should We Call Law Enforcement on Page 25 of the Distance Safety Fund, be updated. So we wondered if the term imminent danger could be more explicitly defined if at all possible. Whether a situation similar to the one in October should be considered an imminent danger is very subjective and confusing since the threat was a warning for what would be happening if it happened.
Yeah, well, I don't think anything we have to say is quite as exciting as
This week is our regents week for you guys too. This is only happening for our 11 graders, 12 graders. The rest of us, luckily, have the week off, which is very lovely for us. We had a mental health day on Monday, which, how was that for you? I took the mental health day by not being there. She was
I think it was great. I think it was just a great day for us to like connect and just spend time together outside of an academic setting. There are puppies in the school. Yeah, absolutely. Throughout this week as well, we have some like conferences, which is an opportunity for us to reflect on our academic journey thus far and just kind of brainstorm with our parents and our family group leaders on what we need more of, what we need less of, and how our courses are going for us. We also have our IACS theater production of The Adam Stone this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Saturday and Sunday. And they've been hard at work on that for a month, so that's really exciting.
And soon coming up is beneficially announced our infusion will be alternative education and progressive learning, which is kind of connected to the consortium meeting that is happening this weekend in New York. Me and Stella, the team representatives are going. I'm really excited. There's going to be some presentations and workshops to really dive into what being a consortium means. At least for me, I feel very like honored to be one of representatives and like representing everyone that I work with. Like, I'm there as a student rep.
Um, yeah, I want to thank Dan and Liz for getting us a bus one way to DC for Art facing History. That's that knocked nearly $3,000 off of our fundraising goal. So that's huge for us. So thank you for that.
We have a childcare fundraiser on February 4th at South Hill. That is a fundraising for Facing History. So people, you know, I'm pretty sure the after-school goes until like 5:30 and we will be staying there until around like eight, nine. So people have more time to, you know, hang out without the children. Yeah.
Upcoming as well is Lives Matter School Week, where we have our equity mentors, two of those being Wayne and Meredith, who have been working really hard at creating that. And we also have the privilege of having that coming for that. So that's really exciting and something that I think will be really great. Technically, this is IHS, but it's my team, so I'm skewed out there anyways. Thursday is our senior night. So yeah, I would love to see you guys there. I play at 5:30 and then we have our senior ceremony around seven after that. So we'd love your support for that.
And then Katrina Lee is officially starting our We can do that maybe at the end of this.
Thank you. Thank you for the updates. Board responses.
Wow, the Facing History trip to DC, when is that taking place? That is
That is March. Early March.
Yeah.
Regarding the driver that car, it's ironic that it would have been an accident after um and finance, Liz, um, transportation director shared that it will be, it was part of her um budget proposal for the upcoming school year to adding new drivers that vehicle. So um we should be, if the voters approve it, we should be seeing a driver's that vehicle. The positive age of the previous one, it was pretty much aging out. So we could be seeing that added. Yes.
Isn't this the new one? Like this one was a twenty twenty one Volkswagen S C B.
Oh, wait. This one took two years to. The new I think was an additional one. Yeah. Yes. But that's why we got sure. But we have another one added to the budget. But you could always go to the old purple one that we have before. Oh, funds for athletics. So the next finance meeting, we actually have the athletics department presenting for the budget. So that will be top of mind um for me to ask and get some details on that. So there may be a delay in getting back to you. But we'll see their proposed budget for the upcoming year. I can ask those questions and they get back about the, yes.
This number, Joe.
Yeah, I share your concern about the smoke detectors not going off when there were bathroom fires and you can be assured I'll check into that and talk to facilities about it. Let everybody know what happened.
There were videos going around social media for students. We think they're. The bottom is like. Yeah. And the air we can see like. However, maybe the alarms will go off because like this new generation just fire downstairs.
Who knows? Going, as you might imagine, just looking at me, I spend all my time on social media. But I haven't seen that, but.
Thank you for your diligence and looking at the safety plan. Um, I love that you pointed out looking up imminent danger and I mean, we are, I mean, the safety plan is still, have we officially approved it?
We approve it all the time.
Always being reworked. I think that's something to open up and look at. I think that's a really brilliant um thing that you picked up on. Thank you.
Yeah, we talked to a survivor about it.
Of course. He knew the page number and everything.
It's only eighty nine bigs long. Other board responses. So I will add uh to that as well. Um, I'm not joking when I say that we approve the safety plan all the time. I happened to do research yesterday and found that we had the safety plan on twelve agendas over the past two years. Uh, maybe you're right, fourteen. I should have wrote down. I, I have, I have the dates. Some of those are in committee meetings, some of those are in board meetings, but it's constantly being updated. In regards to the situation that folks are asking about, I will say that as a board, we will not speak specifically about that situation. But we can speak about what we will do moving forward and what this will look like. And we've been having some conversations about having some sort of community dialogue and conversation around our safety plan and the ways in which we do, given the amount of misinformation that is currently out there. So um, the community should be hearing more from us soon. I'll be working with Dr. Brown. We'll identify a location. We've worked with Dr. Brian as well, but um we, we take the safety plan extremely serious as well as what is included in what will. Uh, the finance about clubs is a great question. Um, in some regards, uh, some of the clubs that you identify receive significant financial support from the school district, right? Code Red being example worth every penny without question, and other clubs receive nothing. And so the questions that we have to have at a finance committee is about that distribution of resources. The resources are somewhat finite, but this mean that again, we can't be innovative and do different things and help ease the costs and the burden for as many folks as possible. So we'll come back to that. Uh, two other quick things. The Mental Wellbeing Day at LACS is a phenomenal concept and idea and approach. Uh, we know that mental wellbeing of our young folks is something that we pay much more and more attention to. So the fact that there is a day that's dedicated to make that happen with the possibility of some support animals being there. We'll talk about. But it's, it's great to hear. It's great to hear that. And uh, by the way, what a great game for the JV basketball team yesterday. What a comeback. Any other?
Well, I was just gonna add one thing about. Even necessary, but one of the complexities of funding for extracurricular, whether it's athletics or classes, is there is quite a bit of language in the ITA Teachers Association contract that goes back many, many decades that lays out formulas, formulas and particulars. And so uh that's just another wrinkle. Yeah, wrinkle layer. Um, in figuring out, you know, how we, we approach the that whole scenario.
Are you talking about the like the advisors study?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Trumbull did tell us about those.
Yeah.
Um, but I think what we're
Right.
For like the activity of the club.
Right. Okay, so that it's not all based on an individual club having to figure out fundraising.
I mean, because basically all the no club gets funding for travel. Like, that's not in code red budget. It all goes to the faculty staff, the faculty sponsors and students doing fundraising and try to make it more equitable by offering scholarships. And that's what some of the larger, more um established clubs do. But even with, I think they're um the material they use to build the robot, I think that's nice. You got it, Brandon.
What I would recommend is that this, Mr. Malcolm, this get placed on a finance committee for a conversation about um bug funding. In addition, not the stipends, but the possibility of funding and work through that.
Yep.
And can be notified if you reps when that conversation is happening. So. All right. Thank you, good folks. We will continue on with our agenda and move to the consent agenda.
I will move the consent agenda as presented with the modification.
Move by Chris, second by, uh, questions. Foundations, Chris, anything that you want to speak to from finance?
I will move to the November, I Treasury report. Uh, we are around ninety five percent of our property tax revenue collected. Uh, the collection ended December twenty ninth, this in October's Treasury Bill Investments, which continue to take advantage of higher interest rates with investments of several CDs. Our liquid funds um are being maintained in high view money market accounts. And we have a bunch of budget interest revenue of one million dollars so far. So um we had a presentation November E or December from our fiscal advisors. Uh, November, thank you. Uh, really talking about our liquid assets and how those are invested and how um we were taking advantage of that. So unfortunately though, it looks like we've taken as much advantage as possible and those interest rates are starting to dip. Um, so it may be coming to an end, but we, a million dollars is nothing to seize there. So.
So you found a fun day, Chris.
And not me.
Any other questions, comments on the consent agenda? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, and we will now move to, um, I won't forget this time, Dr. Brown, the superintendent.
Uh, just quickly, I was to invite the board and members of the community here. If you wish to hear more like what you heard today from our constant educators, go to our webpage and click on the ACSD Insider. We plan to roll out the insider once a month and it will be full of highlights about instructional initiatives and other highlights. So in this most recent edition, there's information about our commendation ceremony and, and young people who were recognized. And we have information about our learning math program and other learning toward I P F P work. Again, if you can share that with your networks, put it out to as many folks as you can. That should be a primary source for information about what we do, why we do it, and great artifacts we're going to have. Thank you, it's heart and other folks on communication team, it's talking and others who have been talking to curate this content.
Thank you. Uh, we will keep moving right on to district um business. Our first item, twelve point one is uh, policy six, one, five, zero. It's a transfer, money transfers for a first reading. Um, and I can tell folks the change uh is in updating the amounts of money for the budget transfers. It went through policy, it went in finance, uh, and here it is now presented to the board. So I would move policy, uh, if I can find this. Six, one, five, zero for a first reading.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. It will go for a second reading at the next policy meeting. Up next is policy six, two, four, zero, the investment policy for a first reading. This also includes procedures, speaking of our investments, uh, it also has been through policy as well as through finance. Your state law. Ball, right. So I move policy six, two, four, zero for a first reading.
Second. Is that including procedures?
Uh, yes. Six, two, four, zero and six, two, four, zero dash R or dash P. Uh, additional questions, conversations from books? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We were, um, are in the middle of doing some changes to um the next agenda item, policy six, seven, zero, zero, purchasing. It is my recommendation uh that I, I move that that policy be tabled into our next board. Second. Discussions, questions? All in favor of tabling? Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Um, it now leads us to agenda item six, two, four, zero, which is our code of conduct. Uh, by all means, please come on up. This has been a long, arduous, tenuous and rewarding process. Yeah, and ongoing, much like the safety.
To the people. Lily, I work as the deputy.
Dan, Brian, I'm the administration. Officer, excuse me.
And both Dan and I have been stewarding district perspective over the last four or five years here. So uh, this rewrite has been many iterations and has received lots, lots of feedback from stakeholders throughout our community. Students, staff, community members, caregivers, and uh you'll notice there's a, there's a number of shifts that were made since the code of conduct public hearing. So we heard some very specific feedback in regards to um, everything from pocket knives. Thank you, Mira. To uh that you'll see changed and, and very clearly clarified to uh clarifying things around sexual harassment and assault in documents. So we've really poured through the feedback. Uh, made some very careful edits and shifts based on the feedback from that session. And you see a beautiful new document that is listed um in in board docs now. I will say that in terms of process, we plan to continue to update and shift our code of conduct and ensure that this is an iterative process as we move forward. We're also really committed to professional development, supporting community learning. Uh, we have sessions next week where students will be in this room. High school students and middle school students will be learning with the doctors when um, and then our staff, uh, smaller group of staff will also be learning next week as well. Um, and and there's, there's, there's much work in order to make this document become a reality structurally, um, and in terms of, in terms of proudness.
When are the doctors when coming? Is it virtual or?
Yes, virtual, but our kids come in person and we have pizza and jonas.
Okay.
Listen, I asked for their feedback. They wanted different snacks this time. I literally got no, that was good left.
So when is that taking place?
Uh, that's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, thirty, yeah, thirty first and then we're on Thursday.
Thursday, yep.
Yeah.
The only thing I want to add is that in a lot of feedback sessions, uh, we talked a lot about how this is a guidance document, pre K through twelve. And we're already starting to think about, um, you know, working with um communications and, and schools on handbooks also, which is a lot of the question, a lot of the questions we receive were really granular in nature, like, how do we respond, pardon, how do we respond to this? But they may be um specific by uh secondary, uh, you know, obviously be different from secondary. So um I think a lot of learning with the groups was realizing that this is a guidance.
Questions from the board, scotch and items.
I would just comment on that last piece of it, uh, you know, if you're working on uh, handbooks that are more at the granular level. I just, I'm very grateful that you are spearheading this because, you know, many years ago, I would go there that handbook didn't work necessarily in sync with the code of conduct. Um, and that handbook for young school would have a very, very different approach than another school. So I'm very glad that we have you in particular because and I'm, and I'm sorry because it's going to be a hell of a lot of work for you. Uh, but I'm glad we have you in a position to have that big picture.
Well, where I think we're excited to work with our colleagues and others too. It'll be a I imagine we'll do some piloting and it'll take us some time. Um, but I know there, there already is some work that's already started.
We've also been talking about how that and really imputing folks in that process is just as important as, yes, whatever the product is going to be.
Additional questions, edits, comments?
Couple of times I've held my head in some of the conversations. There've been a couple of consistent themes. One I'll ask about tonight is this idea of having uh different documents for elementary and secondary. You guys, where, where, where are we on that? Where are we?
That's really about, um, that aligns with what Dan was talking about in regard to handbook.
Yeah.
That are specific to schools. Uh, so for example, Enfield Elementary School last spring had begun a process, really just starting with staff where they were looking at the draft that had been posted. And the, the guiding question was, what does this mean? The, the guiding question was, what does this mean? What would this look like, sound like and feel like at Enfield, right? And. You know, I think part of why Moira is grateful that Dan is getting that up or we are going to be having that because. Um. We have, we've done this for a number of years and, you know, when I'm a principal at Northeast. Our handbook was a particular way and it hasn't necessarily been edited in a number of years and.
Oh, true.
Bell Fermins was.
Was completely different.
And um, and the likelihood that we would have even communicated when we were both principals about it was limited, right? Um, so this process of connecting with kids, families, uh. Administrators, community members and others to make sure that those handbooks or footbooks. Are um. Are aligned to the, the general vision and also meet the needs of the community.
I think it's also a great opportunity to look at how they're restored it. I mean, I think we have this beautiful framework document. Um, and we're doing all this, we're doing, you know, thanks, thanks to Lily and others, uh, work with the winds. We have this great opportunity to not only align the handbooks, but also to make sure there's restorative justice. And restorative practice approaches within each of their, their documents as well.
And you know, like we talked about too, that there's some structure that needs to be related.
So I recall correctly, there is a state ed requirement that our code. Have a plain language summary that's appropriate to be on it.
Correct.
It seems like another daunting task.
No problem, we got it.
Yeah, okay.
It'll just take another five years.
Well, we, it is, it is something on our list for sure, um. Along with handbook alignment, but also looking at plain language, I think. I think out of the work with the handbooks, it'll be easy to. To build plain language, kind of in a backwards planning model.
Yeah, yeah, I thought.
So I think it's important for folks to know that this is identified as a unified code of conduct. And if you've taken a look at either what we've had previously, or despite whether we may have agreed with the approach. But the actual language, or you look at what other school districts do. There actually is not significant difference between a K five and a secondary code of conduct. They're specific to the populations, right, but in terms of you, the great specifics, it's not like they're completely different documents. And yes, I think our goal would be, once we have a unified code of conduct. It then allows us to create the plain language version for both populations, we are. Required to have an elementary and a secondary plain language code of conduct and. This would be one step in the process. And no matter what takes place, this is one step in the process, we want to keep reiterating that as well.
In the interest of inclusivity, are, is I C C, are we moving in any way towards doing plain language, like? More throughout, like have it be something we do in tandem, so we don't have to.
Example?
As an example, I mean, plain language is something that everyone can access, so like. Is there a reason we're not putting all of our stuff into plain language, period?
Yeah, I think this is a document you can look at and make an argument that part of it or the method is playing nicely.
Right.
But it still uses legal terms because we're mandated to do so. And so how do we translate that legalese into something that's much more digestible is the concern, but. To answer your question, I think we've been trying to do that for some time.
I think we do have expertise, we have our communication team, everything we put out should be done in a more simple way.
Right.
We got you back in the past, mobile community ladder, for example, not readable, so that's something we're always doing. Playing languages are a different way of framing it, but it's the same work we've been thinking about.
It's hard to understand.
Yeah.
Well, also, I would say with something like the code, I like, which is how many pages?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, plain language, I mean. What makes a document accessible is not that the language, but like. The length, like a lot of people that can't handle thirty-eight pages.
Well, and the reason why other districts have done things like videos or that are in code of conduct, right, or. Audio versions, so I think those are things that we've been talking about, thinking about. What does that look like, right, do we create videos that go along with this, right, so we're. These are all conversations that we're all.
One last question for peanut gallery over here, guys. Any um, idea of a calendar for the win in there, more of a surround? Resort of justice, is that like a, that's something we can share along with Dr.? A calendar for when.
Or when they're visiting.
When they're visiting. Let's, let's call it a general outline for the more intensive rollout of. Stories just. Or is that just ongoing work that you don't even want to talk about? Calendar, like, sure.
Uh, I think it's probably a combination, their model is a train of trade art model, so it does require. Us to learn how to fish as opposed to eat for a day, right, so. We have uh, four more sessions that are virtual and then we have uh, longer than same training at the end of June. And during, during that time then and afterwards, we more clearly think. That's to, that tends to be the, the system that they use. And to map out much more than zero as they like to.
And who's uh, participating, who's uh, additional training?
Students, so we have about forty-five students at middle school. And high school, L A C S Point Ridge, High School. Uh, middle school needs separate from high school. And then um, we have a number of staff. Um, it's around twenty-five or thirty, um, E S Ps. Principals, associate principals, counselors, teachers, um. Who are all um, engaged in it now and it really was, it was really just a choice based. Um, you know, folks who are interested to start.
And Lily, I imagine much like, and Samaria as well, much like Black Summer, which. We've been doing restorative professional development for some time. That once this happens, we'll continue to build this out for more and more opportunities for professional development.
Yep.
Other questions from? Or? I want to be clear, because you'll see up here, it's listed that it says first reading and adoption. The way in which that happens is if it's a super majority of the board. Um, again, even if we adopted this evening, it means that we're still going to continue to review it, update it, learn. Change language, do more research about two point five inch pocket knives, right, whatever it may be. So the adoption wouldn't be that that's it, the adoption would be, we're moving in this direction and we'll keep. Reviewing it and researching it, so I just want to make sure that all board members have all their questions answered.
And if we talked about, as you said, it policy, um. You said, let's put it on for first reading and adoption. It's just a way of, of moving it along and not letting it, you know, kind of stew as it's been. This has been a very lengthy stewing process.
We began this pre-COVID. Right, and al- almost a full year before COVID. This to give people some context, this is, this is four years and they're making it now longer than that.
And a remarkable evolution.
Well, if there's no other questions, it hasn't been moved yet, because I want to make sure we had. All of our questions answered.
I moved the code of conduct for first, for adoption, first reading and adoption.
Moved by Pat, seconded by Elgret. Any additional questions? All in favor? Passing unanimously, congratulations, fantastic, we look forward to future engagements.
Yes.
Alright, good folks, we have. Two other agenda items that are to hear then. Um, one is the modification to the agenda, um, Emily, if you want to join us in case there are questions. Um, agenda item twelve point five and the modification is resolved that Emily Shite be hereby appointed deputy tax collector. The efficacy school district, New York for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three fiscal year. So that's the resolution that I, I moved that resolution. No, we, we did it for this.
Okay, so you're moving down.
Questions that folks may have? All in favor? It's unanimous, congratulations. So before, our last agenda item is the tax warrant, it's agenda item now twelve point six. Um, how about you, uh, tell us a little bit about the tax warrant and what will, what will have all board members sign before they leave here this evening?
So we collect taxes for ninety days, starting on October first. And we collect it through December twenty-ninth. Um, uh, I would be less than not acknowledging Connie Talmage in our office, who actually does all the groundwork. For collecting the tax that she has been amazing and has been very good for her public and speaking and working with people to make sure things move right along. Uh, but what is presented to you tonight are approximately the three and a half percent. Of taxes that were not paid during that ninety day period. So what we do is we turn those taxes over to the county and the city, depending on where the property is located. And they act as our collection, they're not being levied in county or. City town tax bills like central districts, um, but they are collected on our behalf. And then the county and the city turn the money over to us periodically throughout the year and make us hold. Around this time next year, they have a year to collect. Um, in addition, it does, it does. Uh, add penalties to the taxes that weren't paid. Um, but this is what is being presented to you tonight, the numbers that we are returning over to the county and the city. To be collected on our behalf.
Thank you.
Okay.
Questions that folks may have for Emily?
I just have the Emily's here.
Yeah.
Happy to be here.
Can you just mean in general as well as the same?
Yes.
There's no other question or conversation, you do have a listing of all this, it's in board docs, right, to boot in with.
Yes.
So all in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you very much. Um, and I think that is other, we will, we'll sign in a second, as the document, which we'll sign momentarily. Um, anything else that folks, any other district business, upcoming meetings?
Yeah, Saturday all day, Dr. Brown and I, Mr. Elgret her. And myself, we will be in Motherland in this day at the National. School Works Associations Conference on.
Well, thank you all very much, and if there's no other. Information, we'll bring the meeting to a close, thank you. And board members stay here to sign the tax warrant and we'll be good to go, have a good night, folks.